Evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, can we please start with the roll call?
Council President Prince here. Uh, Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Alberston. Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present. You're in a little bit of echo, or not all present, two absent, sorry.
Two absent, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, and Councilmember McGurven, did I miss you? No, you got him.
Okay. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Rough start.
I move we excuse the two absent council members.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the two absent council members be excused. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. So tonight, we're gonna start off with a proclamation. Uh, it's National Volunteers Month.
Right proclamation, National Volunteer Month, whereas April is National Volunteer Month, an opportunity to shine a light on the people and causes that inspire us to serve and to thank volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voices to make a difference and improve the world. And whereas each year, we recognize the impact of volunteer service and all those who do good to build stronger communities. And whereas as people strive to lead lives that reflect their values, whether online, at the office, or the local food bank, whether with a vote, a voice, or a wallet, doing good comes in many forms, and we recognize to celebrate them all. And whereas volunteering and civic engagement are the cornerstone of a strong city, and Renton nurtures an outstanding group of volunteers who give willingly of their time and talents to make a real difference in the lives of the community. And whereas volunteers connect with the community in youth athletics, senior programs and events, park projects, emergency management, Renton Farmers Market, and police programs and events. And whereas our commitment to service reflects our understanding that we can best meet this community's challenges when we join together. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 2024 to be National Volunteer Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to observe this month by celebrating the important work that volunteers do every day. And witness thereof, I apparent to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of April 2024, signed Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, to, um, accept the award, well, first, we're gonna have, uh, Mary Jane Van Cleve, Mary Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. Mary Jane Van Cleve with the Department of Parks and Recreation. I'll be introducing tonight Teresa Nishi, who will be accepting the proclamation. I do want to acknowledge that Teresa Nishi's been with the city for 24 years, and she's been overseeing this program for well over a decade. She has done so with tireless energy. If you know Teresa, there's a thing called Event Mode. Teresa gets into Event Mode, and she is just this, like, Energizer Bunny from start to finish. She has been at every single one of these events, caring for every single detail, and she is gracious and will never acknowledge how hard she works, but she is phenomenal. So tonight, please, Ms. Teresa Nishi.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you for your recognition of the individuals who are members of our advisory committees, boards, and on the commissions, and for the volunteers from our community groups and our city teams that represent the Police Department, Emergency Management Division, and all of the divisions in our Parks and Recreation Department. Over 600 individuals gave their time to the City of Renton to make programs, youth athletics, and special events successful last year. We are looking forward to showing our appreciation to them this Wednesday at the Renton Pavilion. So thank you for your continued support of the volunteer program.
Thank you very much, Teresa. And before we take a few pictures, I want to say that we do have amazing volunteers in Renton and acknowledge the volunteers that sit on our boards and commissions also, because they're, they're also giving their time. So thank you very much for your 24 years of service. And, uh, we're gonna take a photo now. All right, next is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Join us for Renton River Days 2024 on July 26th, 27th, and 28th. This beloved, community-inspired festival unites the diverse and ever-growing residents of Renton with last year's event attracting over 25,000-plus attendees. Sponsorship investments from dedicated corporate partners and local businesses make this festival possible. Please email rentonriverdays@rentonwa.gov for more information on becoming a sponsor. For general festival information, please visit rentonwa.gov/riverdays. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. Sir.
All right, thank you. So next up, we have audience comment, and we do have a few people signed up, and we also have one person signed up virtually. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. If a response is requested, uh, please provide your name, address, and your email, and we'll make sure that somebody gets back ahold of you. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence. And the first person speaking is Kayla Breely.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, my name is Kayla. I'm a citizen of Renton. I have been observing with growing concern the situation faced by Tom Anderson, the owner of The Landing Gear Works, a vital location, a local aviation business. Tom has repeatedly come before the council, which I have been seeing every time I've been here, um, to raise concerns about an alleged illegal eviction, but has been met with silence. It is troubling to see a local business owner who plays a significant role in our community's economic vitality facing challenges without adequate response or support from this council. Every resident and business owner in our community deserves the right to be heard, especially when their livelihood is at stake. The Landing Gear Works is not just a business, it's a cornerstone of our local aviation industry, employing local residents and contributing to our community. The lack of response to Tom Anderson's concerns raises questions about transparency, accountability, and the city council's commitment to its constituents. I urge the city council to engage with Tom Anderson, provide a platform for open dialogue, and address the issues he has raised. As a concerned citizen, I also request permission to distribute flyers around town to raise awareness about the situation and let our neighbors know about what's in store for the Renton Municipal Airport. I have his back in my seat, I forgot to bring it up. Thank you for your attention to this important matter, and I look forward to seeing a fair, just resolution for Tom Anderson and The Landing Gear Works. However, I, whatever I need to provide for you guys to contact me, I would love to do that, I just don't know how I'm supposed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Tom Anderson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. Coming for you, uh, before you tonight to say that, uh, I understand that you've all voted to, uh, start this eviction process. And each one of you individually has the opportunity to review the leases, to see the evidence that was there, and I'd like you to reconsider this. You have the, the power to do that. Eleven years ago, I came before you, the council. I don't recognize any of the people that were possibly here 11 years ago, but I think I'm quite a bit the senior of everybody here. I'm 71 years old. When I came 11 years ago, I told you about my business, we're the only one like it in the world. We produce titanium landing gear, we make incredible products, we hire local help, we support the community, and I've always had the airports back. I've spoke highly of you, I've gone to events all around the country, and they ask me where I'm from, and I'm proud to say I'm from Renton. That's where my business is. So again, I'd like you guys to really look deep and reconsider what you've planned. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next up is Derek Anderson.
Hello, my name is Derek Anderson, and I live in Seattle, work at The Landing Gear Works. Uh, Tom is my father, and I have been looking forward to, uh, making this legacy move forward, uh, with, uh, with the, the growth that he has initiated. And, I mean, there's been a lot of circumstances at the airport that have prevented us from, um, having any, uh, any, uh, words with, uh, with people that can actually make decisions. And it seems that no matter what, even if we present, you know, growth and, uh, and moving forward, or if we're presenting, you know, maintaining historical buildings, is, it, it doesn't seem like that's the, the direction that the, the city wants to go. And it's, it's just very unfortunate that we haven't had the, uh, the opportunity to, to, and to be a part of the growth around here, um, even though we have been told that we would from the very beginning. Uh, so, you know, we are, we're standing strong, you know, I'm gonna continue my dad's legacy no matter what. And, uh, we are absolutely going to hang in there, as far as I'm concerned, you know, like, we would really, uh, appreciate some sort of, uh, opportunity to, to move forward like we've been promised in the past. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And then signed up virtually, we have one person.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, can you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great. Um, I'm traveling by, uh, virtually to, uh, discuss, uh, uh, shooting that has begun to homeless community of Renton, uh, uh, dark part about maybe a month ago now, maybe a little more. Uh, the, and one of the individuals that was shot, he was caught with a handgun that night, same night, when they came to render aid to him. And, uh, he wasn't charged with the handgun. As far as I know, he was still allowed to keep it. And then he was released from the hospital, but the other guy that was shot, uh, they got together and went to seek retaliation on the man that did the shooting, who's in jail, by shooting at some of his friends, and their dog, and their camp, their homeless as well. And, uh, the one man got arrested who did the shooting, but the other guy, who didn't get cited with the gun, uh, when he was shot, which takes away the man's self-defense case, if, if, you know, that's the situation, I'm not sure. But, uh, it's just kind of crazy that he didn't get arrested for being an accomplice to an assault on him. They're in a car, driving, doing it, everybody in the car gets charged with it. It should be the same when they're walking up on foot together to go talk on. Just wanted to express here for, you know, the guy's a dangerous person, and he's getting to keep his gun that he's not supposed to have. And then he doesn't get charged when there's another gun incident after the fact that he's out of the hospital recovering from his injuries. It's just kind of crazy to me. I don't know the circumstances behind why the police didn't charge him or what, but I could just assume some things, but that would make no sense to share what I'm assuming. So, uh, that's just pretty much it.
Thank, thank you for your comments, and thank you for calling in. All right, thank you very much. Um, next up is the consent agenda. There are five items for council consideration. Um, would you, would council like any pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Seeing none, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President, uh, and seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that, uh, council concur with the consent agenda or approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right. Motion carries. Next round, unfinished business, Council President Prince.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has 11 committee reports this evening.
First report, Finance Committee, committee report approval of claims and payroll vouchers. Uh, the Finance Committee approves the following payments, council payment, accounts payable, total payment of $11,22,463.59 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, uh, and zero wire transfers. Two is payroll total payment of $1,942,463.75 for payroll vouchers, including 665 direct deposits and seven checks. This is the March 16th through 31st, uh, pay period. Three is Kidder voucher, uh, Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $42,596.08. And finally is municipal court vouchers totaling $18,388.66, signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding the 2024 carryforward first quarter budget amendment ordinance and 2023-2024 fee schedule. Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the budget amendment and adopt the ordinance amending the 2023-2024 biennial budget to increase revenues by $76,945,749 for an amended total revenue of $792,361,545 over the biennium, and increase expenditures by $195,227,693 for a total amended expenditure of $1,088,291 over the biennium. And two, approve the resolution, uh, mending the 2023-2024 fee schedule, this signed by the committee members, or the council, sorry, the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the, uh, a grant from For Culture. Uh, the Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the For Culture Sustained Support Program Award of $11,000 to sign the grant agreement, this signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the purchase of a 2024 Peterbilt 548 Gap Vax truck. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with 1.7 Incorporated Washington State Contract Bid 00120 for the purchase of a 2024 Peterbilt 548 Gap Vax truck in the amount of $611,259.78. The committee further recommends authorization of the appropriation of $417,165 from Fleet Replacement Fund and $257,665.80 from the unencumbered balance of that fund. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the purchase of a 2016 Peterbilt 567 cement mixer truck. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Gary Merlino Construction Company to purchase a 2016 Peterbilt 567 cement mixer truck in the amount of $140,760 for public work street maintenance and to authorize appropriation from the Fund 03 unencumbered balance. This appropriation will be included in the, uh, Q1, quarter one budget of adjustments. This is also signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
This will allow us to pour more sidewalks quickly. So with that, I, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding Amendment 3 to an agreement with Graham Baba Architects for the Pavilion remodel. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number 3 to contract 22376 with Graham Baba Architects in the amount of $132,400 for additional scope of work for the Pavilion remodel project. This includes design services for architectural, civil, engineering, and branding scopes of work added by this amendment. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding Amendment 4 to the agreement with Graham Baba Architects for the Pavilion remodel. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to, one, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number 4 to contract 22376 with Graham Baba Architects in the amount of $122,280 for additional scope of work associated with the Piazza Gateway Park design and integration with the Pavilion remodel project. And two, authorize, authorize the allocation of $250,000 from unencumbered general fund balance to the Piazza Gateway Parks Project Fund. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a lease addendum 5 for the lease with Rain City Catering. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to execute the three-month and 16-day lease extension for Rain City Catering effective September 30th, 2024 to January 16th, 2025, in the amount of $4,000 plus a 15% of catering sales. This, too, is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a lease with Verizon Wireless at the Highlands Reservoir. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the lease with Verizon Wireless at Highlands Reservoir for five years, effective February 1st, 2023 to January 31st, 2028. Verizon Wireless has agreed to pay backdated rent. The city receive $7,500 as a one-time administration fee plus $2,800 monthly with an annual increase of 3%, which is approximately $178,000 over the five-year lease term. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a professional service agreement with Fair and Peers Incorporated for the five-year update of the comprehensive plan transportation element. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Fair and Peers Incorporated in the amount of $378,545 to complete the five-year periodic review and update of the Renton Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element. The committee further recommends approval of a transfer of funds through the Q2 budget adjustment process to transfer $300,000 from unassigned fund 317 balance to the arterial circulation program. Uh, this, too, is signed by the, uh, committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final report from the Finance Committee is regarding a participation in the settlement with opioid distributor Janson. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and authorize the adoption and participation in the Janson opioid distributor agreement to receive additional opioid, opioid, uh, remediation settlement funds through the Washington State Memorandum of Understanding. Uh, this is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with this final council, finance committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the final Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Finance Committee was busy. All right, we are on to, uh, legislation. We have one resolution and one ordinance for first reading.
Okay, the, uh, resolution is regarding the, uh, City of Renton Fee Schedule. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2023-2024 City of Renton Fee Schedule.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, next is the ordinance is for first reading only tonight, is regarding the, uh, first quarter and carryforward budget amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2023-2024 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 6088 and amended by ordinance number 6110, 6114, and 6124 by increasing budgeted revenues and expenditures by $76,945,749 and $195,227,693, respectively, authorizing pay changes to comply with Initiative 2302, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be advanced for second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, um, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries, and we're on to new business. Council President Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, after the Finance Committee did such hard work, uh, this week, we're gonna give them the week off, uh, and the rest of us, too. Uh, no meetings on April 29th, because of the fifth Monday. Uh, but we'll be back the day after Cinco de Mayo. Uh, and first up is a committee, a whole meeting in the conferencing center. We have one item on the agenda, RMC 5-28 update. Then at 7:00 PM, we will have our council meeting in the council chambers and by video conference. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Perez.
Not only this, Mr. Mayor, but if you may, I, I want to wish everybody a happy Cinco de Mayo, and just remember, everybody, that is not Independence Day. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Van.
Um, the Utilities Committee's meeting on, uh, May 6th is canceled.
All right, thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce the Transportation Committee will be meeting on- I'd like to announce the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, May 6, at 5:15 PM in the council conference room and via video conference. Two items on the agenda. First, addendum number 823 to LEG 99002 with 540 Renton Hanger LLC. Second, we have emerging issues in transportation to just get an update on the city traffic calling program. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, what is the wish of the council?
Move for adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. We're adjourned, thank you.